Good evening, everybody. I'd like to bring the regular Board of Education meeting of January 9th to order. Could everybody please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome. Thank you for coming. Just a little bit of business. Any and all correspondence that have been sent to the Board of Ed that can be posted are posted on the table outside the room. And one letter from the Southside High School PTA regarding a proposed program changes at the high school is posted. I'd just like to, the emergency exits are at the back of the room. Follow the exit signs down the hall out parking lot here or down the hall further out to the side parking lot there if need be. We are in a good place. The Board loves to recognize the students of our district and today we have two different, completely different ends of the spectrum. Students from Covert here are to show what they're doing in FLESS. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you very much. We are very fortunate to have with us tonight an incredible group who are led by our FLESS teacher assigned to Covert School, Freddie Rodriguez. For those of you who are somewhat unfamiliar, I would hope not though, foreign language is very important to us and in fact it's incorporated into every child's life in the elementary buildings. And so we want to take advantage of the opportunity tonight to provide you with a looksee at exactly what goes on. And this time, although it happens in all of our elementary buildings, we're going to focus tonight on Covert School. So Freddie, I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to say to start things off? Or Chris, is there anything that you would like to add?
Jump in for one second. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. There we go. Principal Raymar could not be here tonight.
Oh, yes.
Principal from Covert School, so he did ask me to just jump in and introduce Senor Rodriguez from Covert School who has a group of 4th and 5th grade students and they're going to talk to us and present to us tonight on foreign language at the elementary school level, FLESS Spanish.
Alright, ¿cuáles son los chicos? Excellent. So as Dr. Johnson and Mr. Terry said, I'm Freddie Rodriguez and I am so lucky to be able to teach these great kids from Covert School. I also teach at Riverside School where I started off as a TA. And I am lucky to teach español. Okay, so this board here is just to show, okay, pictures of different things, okay, that we do in FLESS, whether it's learning about the cultures. There are many Spanish speaking countries throughout the world. I myself am from the Dominican Republic and I often share my experiences, my background in being Dominican and the kids get to learn about that, different things as far as what they're learning in school, okay, their curriculum, okay, that we take and we learn in Spanish. The 4th graders right now, they are, actually, we're going to introduce ourselves, okay? I love to use props, one of the props being a microphone, okay, the kids get a kick out of it and it's fun. So here we go. Hola. ¿Cómo te llamas?
Me llamo Adíaz. Hola. Hola. ¿Cómo te llamas?
Me llamo Eliás.
Hola.
Hola.
¿Cómo te llamas?
Me llamo Teresa.
Hola.
Hola.
¿Cómo te llamas?
Me llamo Catalina.
Hola.
Hola.
¿Cómo te llamas?
Me llamo María.
Hola.
Hola.
¿Cómo te llamas?
Me llamo Katia.
Excellent. Applause. One great, one thing that we learned indirectly through Spanish is obviously the accent and as you can tell, some of these kids have very nice Spanish accents and a lot of that is attributed to the fact that they're so young, they're not afraid to try and that's one of the advantages of learning foreign language, so young. So the 4th graders right now, they're going to present a project. We work on geography, which they do in their normal class with their classroom teacher and they, I gave them each a character. That character was in a city. They got into groups and using an iPad, they had to then, using the vocabulary that we learned, they had to come up with a paragraph about that city. So they are going to present that to you right now.
Ciudad de México está en México.
Ciudad de México está en México.
México está al lado de los Estados Unidos.
Ciudad de México está en México.
México está en América del Norte.
América del Norte está en la tierra.
¿Qué es la capital?
Sí, excelente, muy bien.
So we also learn about words that are cognates, alright. Cognates are words that are going to sound alike and almost the same, both in English and in Spanish. That helps the children with their Spanish learning. México está en América del Norte. América del Norte, ¿qué es América del Norte? North America, muy bien. Y está en la tierra. Repiten, la tierra. ¿Y qué es la tierra? Earth, the world. Excellent. Applausos otra vez. And the 5th graders, at the beginning of the year, I like to start off, okay, nice and easy for them. We read a poem, okay, it's called La Fresa and we read the poem in English and in Spanish and we just pick out the words that they know after reading it. I'm not looking, there's no reason to read it except I'm just looking, let's see, what words do they know that they can pick out from the poem?
Senor Rodriguez, can you hold the mic?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. And we acted it out and a video that we'll present to you after, they're going to present, they're going to read it for you in English and then you'll watch a video of the Spanish.
Working strawberries, working strawberries is hard and delicious because as you go along picking them, you throw one in the box and two in your mouth.
The strawberry is so, is so deep red and heart shaped that, that it makes you want to give it a very big bite.
Strawberry is very good. It's sweet and luscious. Children and old people eat it and people with a sweet tooth.
The strawberry worker says goodbye to go and cut more little berries so he can bring them to those pretty girls.
Strawberry worker, the strawberry worker says goodbye again and to cut more strawberries even though his back is twisted in spite of his headaches.
I say goodbye now because I'm not a strawberry worker. My back won't get twisted because I'm a good writer.
And now we will watch a video.
If I can just jump in for one second, senor.
Yes.
There is so much to do in the elementary school day that we incorporate aspects of FLESS into our regular curriculum. So global studies and history is done through the lens of foreign language and ELAs, you saw dissecting a poem and working through that, is all done with, through FLESS as well. And I appreciate the fact that when you started and the kids introduced each other, that they looked each other in the eye and said hello. And that's something that we need to incorporate. A lot of our kids walk around with kind of their heads down or in a phone or adults sometimes often, I'm guilty of that as well. So having kids learn to do that is really something that we're, it's not a statute that we're meeting or a standard, but it's something that we want to incorporate in everything that we do with our kids and I see that FLESS is doing that.
We learn culture and part of it is also learning our culture and the American culture is that when you talk to someone and you're looking them in the eye, okay, that is, you know, respeto, that's respect. So goes right along. Alright.
Any introduction to this or just let it go?
No.
Is this it? Is this the right one?
Yes.
Okay.
La fresa es muy buena y es muy dulce. Porque cuando se toca, la fresa es muy dulce. Uno se siente, una a la cabeza y dos a la boca.
La fresa es de color morado que tiene forma de corazón que es uno de la anchoa.
La fresa es muy buena, está muy fresco y sabroso que niñas y ancianas la comen y hasta la gente con los ojos.
Ah, se despide el fresa a cortar más decidas para que se las entregue a estas lindas señoritas.
Otra vez se despide el ofrecer de todas las fresas y hay un que con el huevo bien trestido se hasta codo, el huevo de cabeza.
Yo ya me despido porque yo no soy ofrecero, el huevo mío no está trestido porque yo soy un buen compositor.
I love what I do and like Chris said, you know, one of our main things that we do in Rockwell Center with FLESS is that we love to incorporate, okay, their curriculum, what they're learning already in school, okay, with Spanish and their minds just, they're amazing, so I just want to say that.
Senor, una pregunta por los estudiantes, por favor. Estudiantes, ¿te gusta FLESS?
¿Te gusta FLESS? Si o no.
Profesor es mejor, sí?
Soy mejor. Soy bueno si o no.
Bueno, bueno, oh, perfecto, perfecto, gracias, gracias.
And I just want to leave one more thing with the board. A student I did not come, her name is Lila today, she's in 4th grade and during her writer's workshop time, she came to me one day and she's like, "Senor, I wrote a story for you." And this just shows like, like how a program like this can inspire a child to write. And she wrote a story, it's all in Spanglish and it's actually a pretty funny story. It's called "Cómo te llamas?", which means, "What is your name?", okay, "How are you called?" But the student is having trouble because not understanding and she thinks it's llama, like, because it's spelled the same way. But I just wanted to leave a copy with each one review so you can take it home and read it. Thank you very much.
Alright. Thank you.
You're welcome. Picture, photo? We need to get a picture. Oh, no. Get together, one, two, three. How do you say cheese? It's curd. We don't say. Who sells this much? Anybody else want a picture of just your kid? More just class. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I didn't get one either. We'll share, we'll share. I took Robert's.
Thank you, Senor Rodriguez and thank you, students from Covert FLESS program. Dr. Johnson, as we move on, from our small students to our big students.
Not just big, but very, very talented students, as we will very soon find out. This is an opportunity for us to, I guess, also take a look at the wide variety of things that we do, not just foreign language, but also as we move on to athletics, we find out that we have a number of students here at Southside who really and truly excel. It's an opportunity for us to tonight recognize what both the county and the state have recognized as outstanding performances during this past season. So Ms. Rosetto, if you wouldn't mind, introducing our student athletes.
Hola, mi nombre es Moira. And that sums up my Spanish ability. It is my first time.
I don't think so. Is it a green light on tonight, right? Is it a green light on?
It is my pleasure, I don't think this is on either, to honor, to introduce the next group of student athletes and to honor them for their outstanding achievements during the 2018 fall athletic season. Through a tremendous amount of hard work and dedication, both on and off season, all of these individuals earned all county honors or above. Before I begin speaking about the individual accomplishments, I am proud to announce that Southside High School has been recognized by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association as one of only 13 schools in Nassau County to receive the distinction of being a scholar athlete team school of excellence. In addition, for the second year running, Southside High School Athletics has been recognized as a stay in the game sportsmanship school for our positive behavior on the field, court, track, mat, and course throughout the 2017-18 school year. I would also like to mention that the boys and girls cross country, the boys and girls soccer, boys golf, and the girls cheerleading, swimming, diving, tennis, and volleyball teams were all recognized by New York State Public High School Athletic Association as a scholar athlete team for the fall of 2018. To start us off with individual accomplishments, I would like to invite Coach Steve Kazajanski and players Joe Buglione, Danny Kelleher, who couldn't be here tonight, and Robert Reese to come to the front of the room from the boys varsity soccer team. Boys varsity soccer were the conference three champions this year. Joe has been a four-year member of varsity soccer team and a two-year captain. He received all conference honors as a freshman and sophomore, earned all county distinction as a junior and senior, and was selected as this year's conference player of the year. Joe also led the Cyclones team in goals with eight and assists with seven. Danny Kelleher, who could not be here tonight because he's out of goalie training, has been on the team, a varsity starter for two years. Last year, he was selected as honorable mention all county athlete and this year earned the title of all county as a junior. His distribution, in addition to his shot stopping ability, has elevated him to one of the best goalkeepers on Long Island. Robert Reese has been a three-year varsity soccer player and after missing the majority of his soccer, sophomore season, he was able to come back this year and be an integral part of the team's success. He was selected as a captain, earned all county honorable mention honors, and was the second highest scorer for the Cyclones with six goals and eight points overall. Congratulations, Danny, Joe, Rob, and the boys varsity soccer teams. and Olivia Rodriguez from the varsity girls soccer team. Kelsey, wave. Kelsey has been a three-year varsity player and senior captain who started in all conference and non-conference games this season for the Cyclones. Kelsey's leadership qualities, defensive skills, and ability to challenge her opponents led her to be voted by her teammates as best defensive player of the 2018 season and earned her all-county honors. Alex has been a four-year varsity player and senior captain who started every varsity game for the past two seasons. Alex's knowledge of the game, tenacity in the center of the midfield, and determination to go to goal led her to be voted by her teammates as best midfielder on the 2017 and 18 seasons and earned her all-county honors two years in a row. Olivia has been a four-year varsity player and a two-year starter. Her athletic ability is like no other and her versatility on the field and many, in many different positions helped the Lady Cyclones to be successful, to a successful conference season. Her soccer feet and her ability to get forward are some of the reasons why she was voted as best offensive player of the year by her teammates and earned her all-county honors. Congratulations, Kelsey, Alex, and Olivia. Now I would like to invite Coach Connor Hall and football players Nick Lucazi and Will Pickett to join the front of the room. Varsity football, led in part by these two young men, had an exciting year. They ended their season in the Final Four Championship and as a result, Coach Onesto, assisted by Coach Lessick, Robinson, Hall, and D.G. Amo, were selected as the New York Jets High School Coach of the Week for progress made with the team. Nick has been a varsity offensive and defensive starter for the Cyclones for the past three years and was selected as captain this year as a junior. His physical attributes, athletic ability, and tenacity have made him one of the top football players in Nassau County. This season alone, he totaled 490 rushing yards, 393 receiving yards, and scored 12 touchdowns, two while on special teams, earning him all Long Island and all-county honors. We are still waiting to hear if he was an all-state selection. As a junior, Nick is already on many of Southside's all-time scoring lists, including receiving yards in a season, kickoff return yardage in a season, points earned in a season, and points earned in a career. Will Pickett has been a two-year starter in the positions of quarterback and linebacker and was selected as a captain as a junior this year. This season alone, he had 177 carries for a total of 1,237 yards and 14 touchdowns. As a quarterback, he threw for 496 yards and three touchdowns, totaling 84 points for the season, earning him all-county honorable mention honors. As a junior, Will is already on many of Southside's all-time scoring lists, including season completion percentage, season and career rushing yards, and season and career points earned. Congratulations, Nick and Will, and the varsity football team. girls volleyball team. Girls volleyball were the conference A1 champions this year. Alexa has been a varsity player for the past two years and secured her starting position during the 2018 playoff run where she was a key component in the team's county championship. This year, Alexa was an outstanding captain and leader both on and off the court. She was a true role model for her teammates as both a scholar and an athlete and her athletic ability and intense drive earned her all-county honors this season. I would also like to mention one other volleyball player, Caroline Lamachio, who could not be here tonight because she's at volleyball practice out east. Caroline was a three-year varsity starting athlete who earned all-county honors two times, all Long Island honors one time, and all-state honors two times. Caroline will be playing Division One volleyball next fall at Providence. Congratulations, Alexa, and the girls varsity volleyball team. Next, I would like to call up to the podium Coach Chris Webster, Coach Karia Figurito, Dan Finning, Robert Milano, and Charles Ohanian from the boys cross country team. Boys cross country team were division champions, conference runner-ups, and placed third in the counties this season. Before I speak about these three young men, I would like to mention that Coach Webster, wave, was selected by Nassau County Track Coaches Association as the county Class II Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Coach. Senior Dan Finning has been a four-year member of the varsity team consistently ranking in the top three for all four years. Dan was named captain as a senior and led the boys team to a division championship. Dan earned the titles of all-county and all-conference this year and was ranked as Southside's top runner consistently over the course of the season. Junior Roberto Milan has played a strong role in the boys championship season for the last several years. Due in no part to Roberto's efforts, the team has won the title of division champions two years in a row. For the past three seasons, Roberto has consistently been a top-three runner for the Cyclones, earning all-county and all-division titles this year. Junior Charles Ohanian has shown tremendous growth and improvement over his three years on the team. It was evident from his freshman year that Charles looked to be a varsity member, setting goals and working to achieve them, and his hard work and diligence have paid off. While he has run varsity all three years, it was this year that saw great breakthroughs in his times. Charles has grown into Charles has grown into a disciplined, fierce competitor on the field while maintaining his respectful poise and kindness off. Charles's diligence led to his being named all-county and all-conference this season. Congratulations to Coach Webster, Dan, Robert, and Charles. team and ask that when they hear their name, they join Coach Webster and Figs at the podium, well, in the center of the room. Team members are Avery Bruhl, Olivia Duca, Teresa Kenny, Caitlin Moore, Elizabeth Quilty, Alexa Sitterly, and Carly Wolfel. Sophomore Avery Bruhl, who is presently running in the Milrose Games, has been a two-year member of the varsity team and a consistent top-three finisher. Avery has represented Southside at the state championships both years and earned all-county and all-conference honors this season. It is not just one runner who makes for a winning cross-country team. It takes seven dedicated, disciplined runners. Avery has fulfilled that role both years and played a significant part in the team's success. Sophomore Olivia Duca, who is also presently running in the Milrose Games, has been a two-year varsity athlete who competed both years as a part of the Southside State Qualifying Team. Olivia placed third in the counties and came in first in the state qualifying meet the following week. At the state championship, Olivia finished 14th and was the fastest runner representing Nassau County. She was also voted by Nassau County Coaches Association as this season's most outstanding runner and earned a position on Newsweek All-Long Island Team as well as all-county and all-conference honors. Teresa Kenny, wave, has just joined the team this year as a junior, and she probably only joined the team because last year, the coach was also her English teacher and asked her every day to be on the team. Consensus is that she probably just joined so he would leave her alone. Nevertheless, as someone new to distance running, Teresa immediately proved what her coach/teacher knew all along, that this sport was her calling. Her commitment and drive made her a top-seven team runner in this season and earned her the privilege of running at the state championships. Teresa also earned all-county honors as an individual. Captain Caitlin Moore has been a member of the varsity squad for three years. She competed in the state championships as a freshman and as an individual as part of the team for her sophomore and junior years. Unfortunately, Caitlin was nursing some injuries and could not compete at her usual pace during the regular season. But for the county and state qualifier meets, she was able to push hard and contribute to the team's success, earning her all-county honors. Lizzie also joined the team this year as a sophomore, but from the moment she set foot on the team in a new sport, she ascended to the top five immediately. Lizzie made the team and her coaches laugh while off the field, but at the starting line, she became a serious competitor, thus leading her to a spot on the state championship team and all-county and all-conference honors as an individual. Alexa Sitterly was a young freshman, she's waving, in the field of giants. Although she would say very little at practice, her diligence and competitive nature earned a top varsity spot on the team this season, a spot at the state championships and all-conference honors as an individual. Captain Carly Wolfel, who is also presently running at the Milrose Games, has been a member of the varsity squad for three years, has earned the right to compete the last three years at the state championship, once as an individual and twice as a member of the team. She finished second in the county championships and earned all-county and all-conference honors this year. This year, the girls varsity cross-country team finished their season as division champions, conference and county runner-ups, and as the Nassau County State Qualifying Team. Coach Webster stated that this team is currently in a golden age. The past fall was the second consecutive year that the team earned the privilege of representing Nassau County at the state level. After being named the Nassau County runner-up, the team rallied the next weekend at the state qualifier. They were seeded third but had breakthroughs and upset all the competition, winning the state qualifying meet and moving on to states the next weekend to race against all the top teams in New York State. Mr. Webster tells the girls that in 10 years from now, he will still be talking about this current team. Congratulations to the coaches and the girls varsity cross-country team. Next, I would like to call up Coach Ryan Clark and Kiara Kennedy from the girls swimming Girls swimming and diving finished third in their conference this season, and freshman Kiara Kennedy presently holds the school record for the 50 and 100 freestyle events in addition to the 200 medley relay. This year alone, she qualified and participated in the New York State Championships in the 100 Free, where she had an outstanding performance. She entered her season earning all-county, all-conference, and all-division honors. Congratulations, Kiara, and the girls swimming and diving team. And finally, I would like to invite Coach Chris Colasante, Julia Gentile, and Lauren Zola from the girls tennis team. The girls tennis team placed second in their conference this season. Julia and Lauren placed first and second singles throughout the regular tennis season and finished with a combined singles record of 26 and 2 and a doubles record of 7 and 1. They were the first tennis players from Southside to earn Newsday's prestigious All-Long Island First Team honors. In addition, they both earned all-division, all-county, and all-state honors with their doubles victory in the 2018 Nassau County Invitational Tennis Tournament. The girls later went on to reach the quarterfinals of the state tournament, finishing top eight in the state's doubles championship. Congratulations, Julianne and Lauren, and the varsity girls tennis team. And that ends the presentation.
Dr. Johnson, have you brought items for information?
Yes, thank you very much. We've gone from foreign language to athletics. We're going to move over right now and ask Dr. Pelletieri to spend a few minutes and talk to us about what we have called the 21st-century science curriculum for the school district. So, Dr. Pelletieri, please.
Dr. Johnson, thank you very much.
It feels like we're going to tip over. Does anybody want to move to that side?
No. I will take your move. Just want to give people some, an update on some of the standards changing that are happening throughout the, throughout the state. In particular, we're going to look at science tonight. I know people talk about why we could, we are updating our standards, in particular, again, science. Our prior standards, the last time we had an update, was 1996, New York State Standards for Mathematics, Science, and Technology. As you can imagine, a couple of things have happened in the world since 1996 that might have impacted science and technology in some regard. One of the things I want to focus on as we go throughout is a shift from teaching, I moved the head before I wanted to, teaching answers to teaching questions. And that's a mindset and a focus that I really want us to focus on it and talk about as we move throughout this presentation. Izzy, did you ask a good question today? So, that's a question of mother of 1944 Nobel Physics laureate Isidore Rabbi asked him every day when he got home from school. So, I ask my son every day when he gets home, "What did you learn in school today?" And I'm sure many of you do the same thing, and they all say the same thing, which is nothing, which is incredible that we have everyone here doing all of this work and we're not learning, kids are not learning anything. So, I'm going to start posing, I think, this question. Isidore said that he became a scientist when, because he was prompted so much by his mother to inquire and become more inquisitive and to study and to question. And I love that question, "Did you ask a good question today?" I'm sure when I propose that to my 14-year-old son, I will get a quizzical look. Thank you for coming on to this side of the floor. I appreciate that. That's the groom's side. So, how do we do this? How do we build upon our past to prepare for the future? Well, we're going to develop our current New York State Science Standards and statewide assessments. This is something that needs to be done in a very methodical and thoughtful manner. I think we've learned from some of the mistakes of the past, so we're taking our time with science. We are going to look at everything across the board, from assessment to curriculum to professional development, material resource support, administrative, and community support as well. And that's part of this presentation, in talking with people and explaining what's happening in the science classes of today. How is teaching going to be different? Well, we refer to teaching science now in 3D or three dimensions. The current state assessments aren't going to be changing initially, so some people say, "Well, why would you change the standards now?" And we definitely want to start to change the standards in preparation for new assessments because we feel that these changes will improve our teaching practices and improve student learning. What's new in the New York State Science Learning Standards? We talk about 3D again. It refers to the thoughtful and deliberate integration of three areas, scientific and engineering practices, the disciplinary core ideas, and what we call cross-cutting concepts. And I'll get into these in particular as we move forward. But the ideas, again, and you'll see the word "doing" underlined, we're going to be doing science as we move forward, as opposed to, again, learning formulas, learning answers. And students will construct their understanding by engaging in scientific and engineering practices. I love that picture. Those are our students back in kindergarten looking at prisms. I'm going to track down those young ladies one of these days and see where they are now. It's a couple of years old, that picture. I'm sure they don't even know that that picture, I use that in several presentations. I really love the look on their faces and really examining what's in front of them. So, moving forward with the standards, again, the science and engineering practices, how students learn, we want to teach them behaviors of scientists and engineers and problem solvers. Get them to learn and understand inquiry and the design process for engineering. Cross-cutting concepts, what should we look for? What patterns do we look for? What's going to help us transfer what it is that we're learning as we cross disciplines? And where do we need explicit instruction in both science and engineering or problem solving? And then lastly, disciplinary core ideas, what is it that they actually learn? We're going to learn in the physical sciences, life sciences, earth and space sciences, engineering, technology, and applications of science. So, what are these SCPs? What are these science and engineering practices? We are going to teach students about asking questions and defining problems. We're going to develop and use models, carry out investigations. We need to look at, learn and interpret data, use mathematical and computational thinking, construct explanations and design solutions, and defend explanations and defend solutions. Really important. That crosses disciplines as well. And engaging in argument from evidence, these last couple really talked to ELA, they talked to other disciplines as well, and that's something we want people to recognize, that these are not silos that we're teaching in. I can take the skills from my ELA class and use them in my science class. How do I write like a scientist? How do I write like a historian? We want to make sure that students understand that these skills are transferable. And obtaining, evaluating, and communicating information, again, really important nowadays about getting information that is vetted and how you're going to communicate that information. There are cross-cutting concepts, these cross all across, all the domains of science. Again, we're looking at patterns, cause and effect, scale proportion and quantity, what are the flow cycles and conservation and energy and matter, stability and change. What is stable? What is going to change? How do we know? Also, our new standards are going to address the four Cs, and we talk about STEAM, science technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. But the four Cs, 21st-century skills, we talk about all the time, especially in technology. And you hear me talk about it when I work with teachers as well. Communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity. And you don't often put creativity with science, but it really needs to be there, really important. So, these are, again, our core ideas, life science, physical science, earth and space science, engineering and technology. And this will be posted on the website so that people can go through this if they want to themselves. So, science education will involve less rote memorization of facts and terminology and include more where facts and terminology are learned as needed while developing explanations, designing solutions. We will have less learning of ideas disconnected from questions, and we will create systems that model and explain phenomena. We'll provide less information to the whole class and have more students conducting investigations themselves, solving problems, engaging in discussion. We'll have less teachers posing questions and more students discussing open-ended questions. That's really the strength of getting kids to work at a high cognitive level, and they'll have to use evidence to support their claims. Less reading in textbooks, we moved away from textbooks some time ago, you'll remember, with our earth science portal in the middle school. We use a lot of digital resources in our high school already as well, and we're going to learn from multiple sources, very important. Less pre-planned outcomes with multiple investigations driven by student questions, fewer worksheets, students writing in journals, reports, posters, media's presentations, and less of an oversimplification of activities for students, and more supports so all students can engage what it is that we're trying to teach them in science and engineering practices at a sophisticated So, there are great many aspects to each discipline, whether it be math, science, or ELA. What we're looking for nowadays is really that sweet spot, that gray area there where we capture all three of those disciplines, building a strong base of knowledge through content-rich texts. Read, write, and speak grounded in evidence, very important that we provide evidence to what it is that we say. A lot of times, people want to give their opinion. You can do that on, you know, sports, radio, talk shows, and things like that. But we want to, even there, you want to back it up with content, with evidence. Construct viable arguments and critique reasoning of others and engage in argument from evidence. We do that in a lot of our classes, our IBTK classes, I think, do that as well. So, we're moving forward with this. Elementary science will be more important than ever. It's a logical development through the grade levels as we grow through a staircase of complexity. We have prog- We have progressions in the appendices. And this is the scope and sequence for K through 5. Again, this will be posted online if you want to go through it. You'll see that, for example, let's just take weather in kindergarten in the center under earth and space, then you see weather and climate again in third grade. What we do is we build at its level of sophistication for the students so that you are growing along with the topics. So, what's happening now? There are three phases the state has asked us to work through. The initial phase was a transition to raise awareness and build capacity. We've done that for the past year or so, and we're kind of moving out of that phase, I would say, in transitioning to implementation. I see a couple of our kindergarten teachers here tonight. At least, Mrs. Evil, how are you? Good, good to see you. Mrs. Braylon, I see one of our fourth grade. I see several of our teachers. We have started to implement new kits at the elementary level, new science kits. As you know, we do egg to chick every year. That's something that's really been a constant and people really enjoyed here in Rockville Center. And we have brought in some new kits this year so that kids have new opportunities. Our teachers are receiving professional development on those kits as well, and they will constantly be looked at and revised and improved upon. So, we are certainly transitioning at this time. And then Phase 3 is the implementation and sustainability phase. Now, there is no timeline. When is this going to happen? When are we going to be held accountable in terms of state assessments? I'm not certain yet. Grade 4, they're saying they're going to move to the grade 5. Grade 4 test, science test, is going to move to grade 5. The earliest I've heard is 2022, so I'm not positive even about that. There are no plans for changing the Regents' level tests at all at the middle school or high school. Again, they're going very slow and steady in terms of this curriculum update as opposed to what happened with ELA and math and Common Core a few years ago. How will our classrooms look different? In 2017, these were adopted, but again, the Regents' exams are going to stay the same. Again, why do anything? We're going to work at improving teaching and learning. We don't want to just teach to the cores and to the exams. We're going to begin by adapting what's currently done, and that idea of moving to a 3D type of instruction. We constantly look for professional development opportunities where we bring people in or we send people out for professional development. Very important. We're starting to look at lessons and change lesson. We use phenomena, teach content by engaging in practice. And permission to fail, that's very interesting. I talk to people about that all the time, giving our kids permission to fail. And people say, "Oh, my God, my child cannot fail. I don't want him to fail. I have to protect him from that." But we can grow from failure. That's really a place where we can grow, and school is a safe place to do that. And so, we want kids to get in there, get their hands dirty. I'm sure teachers want that as well. And get in there and enjoy science class. We do not want the science class of old. We want a new and improved -- any science teachers here tonight? No? Oh, yes, okay. So, that's not your class, I know, but we want kids to recognize that science can be fun and interesting. And so, a quick clip here. I just want to show you what kind of what this looks like in action. This is a 90-minute clip. I'll show about 30 minutes. No. Three minutes. Three minutes I'm going to show, and then I'm going to jump out. Look.
It's done.
It's showing on my laptop and not on a computer.
And you're in charge of tip.
Yeah, look at that.
How the earth changed. Noah?
It sounds great, right?
We talked about that, right? Waya?
A rock slide.
A rock slide. Take that one easy, right?
Yeah, I'm going to try. Hold on a second. I'm going to try something here. I'm going to try something here. If that doesn't work, then I'm just going to talk to you about what was on there. Let's try it here.
Can you get somebody to unlock the doors? They're both locked. I don't know if we can come.
No, it's not working. All right. So, I spent 40 minutes on this earlier today, making sure that video worked, and it doesn't work now. So, that video highlighted for us what was happening in a third-grade classroom where kids were working on erosion, and they got cups of sand, buckets of sand. They dumped it upside down, and they put water on it, and they blew on it with a straw, and they made a complete mess of the classroom. But they really got to learn what erosion looked like, whether it was by wind or by water. And those are the types of things, instead of a teacher, again, talking to the students about what that looks like, like I'm doing now, and you and I apologize that that's not working. Having the kids actually do it is what we want to do as we move forward. So, let's see if I can try that. That won't work. Yeah, I tried that when I was doing my experiment earlier today.
We have a smart TV. It might work.
Let's try this from the beginning. That's like this presentation. There's another -- that's a cute video of a ferret or something falling asleep in class while a teacher's talking. That's not going to work either, so just imagine that. But why do we do this? Why are we changing what's happening with our science students, with our science instruction? Look at the top 10 skills. And 2020 used to be a long time ago. When I was a young man, 2020 was a long time ago. And 2020 is here, next year. Complex problem solving, critical thinking, creativity. Those are the things at the top of the list. Those are the things, those are the skill sets that are going to be improved for our students. Cognitive flexibility. Those will all be improved for our students by this new approach, and I'm really excited that we will be moving in that direction. Here's another video that's not going to work, but I'm going to make it work. Watch this. Watch what I'm going to do. Come on.
Imagine the office that you care --
Oh, my God.
-- or a time machine. Or a time machine with an automatic rope shebang. Now imagine this. Glasses, hairpin, whoever they are, or maybe her. But how do kids like these? They join the types of people that do things like this. Maybe we should ask this guy.
Norwegians have it. Sometimes it's really to have.
Go home, and you're getting homework. Google -- I want you to Google.
Will you put this on the website?
Yeah, it doesn't mean it's going to work, though.
Google how to make something work from your PC to the smartphone.
So, the idea is if you Google "Erno Rubik," the guy who invented Rubik's Cube, he talks about going through school and being taught answers, and he wants us to focus on teaching questions. That's what got him started. That's what started this presentation tonight about teaching questions and that question idea and that questioning approach. I'm going to question why I couldn't get those videos to work. And if you go up there and click on it, it still won't work either because I tried that earlier tonight, and I got it working, and I really can't imagine why that's not working. It lost its connection, maybe? Go ahead. Try it. You tried it, right? You tried it?
Want me to try it again? Oh.
Yeah. Double-click it. Triple-click it. Click it six times and see if it works. Okay. So, ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for that malfunction there, but the idea was, again, we do have new science standards. They are going to, you're going to start to see a big change in what's happening in your children's classrooms. Please talk to them about it. Ask them what questions did they ask today at school. I think that's a great approach, and we look forward to rolling this out over the course of the next several years. So, thank you very much. And I will work on that video.
Any board members have any questions?
So many. Chris, when will, are our students starting to see some of these changes already? I mean, I know that we've talked about new kits that are going into the elementary school. Can you actually talk about what those new kits are? Because maybe people don't.
So, yeah, sure. For example, science kits are the programs that we use at the elementary level to teach our students. For example, there's a crayfish kit in fourth grade, and the kids get live crayfish. They come really small, and they put them in aquatic environment, and the kids feed them, and there's usually about a half dozen or so, and then the kids go on vacation for a weekend or something, then they come back, there's one giant one.
I was going to say.
With a really big claw, and they learn survival of the fittest, and they learn, and then they auction it off at the end. No, but actually, I mean, that's an example of a kit, and it's true to life. This year, one of our new kits was a gecko kit, where kids got a, we got a live gecko about the size of your pinky, let's say, and kids were really excited. The teachers were at first as well. We got little tiny crickets to feed them, and then they started escaping and things like that.
The geckos or the crickets?
No, the crickets. Everyone kept the geckos, yeah. But I'm going to have a serious conversation, if I can, for a moment about live materials. So, it's great to bring in a gecko and show our students that. So, this gecko grows up with our kids. He's under a rock basically 23 hours and 50 minutes of a day because he's hiding in there by himself as he grows throughout their time here with us in Rockville Center. And then, at the end, the kids see him, they play with him at first, but then we kind of move on to the next kid and the next thing. And what happens with those creatures? I've had a couple of teachers talk to me on the side about what are we doing here? We do a butterfly kit. We raise butterflies. Technically, we're not supposed to release those. They're not part of our environment, these monarch butterflies that we get in. They actually tell us, put them in a bag. Any kids here? Put them in a bag and put them in the freezer.
What?
And dispose of them. So, I know we have teachers here that would drive all the way to New Mexico to release them because that's how much they care about these animals and creatures and their kids. So, there are some questions that I'm going to be working through with our staff and our teachers around live materials. But to your point, the kits are fantastic. They learn a lot. It brings a lot to our program. Teachers schedule around it because there's a certain period of time when they're going to be in, when the kits have to be back, especially, again, in terms of live materials, what gets sent back. We had a gecko questionnaire. How are the geckos? Are they healthy or not? Concerns around that issue. But the materials, the kits are something that we teach our program through as opposed to, again, a textbook. When we started to transition during this time period last year, someone from one of the textbook companies, I won't mention, brought me this giant textbook for kindergarten. You drop it on your toe, you'd break your foot. And I said, "I don't want to get my kindergartners giant textbooks. We have the world at our fingertips and videos that work sometimes and things like that, and we could teach people that way." And so, we're definitely, you're not going to see giant textbooks and things like that in our elementary schools. You're going to continue to see kits and things like that. There'll be a question about whether we continue with live materials. The egg-to-chick program, which everyone loves, those I know get picked up. I see the lady. She picks them up. She actually took my daughter one time to bring them to the farm where they release them. So, you know, petting zoo, yeah, petting zoo. So, they're not, they don't end up anywhere else. So, I know that outcome, but some of the other things we'll talk about as we move forward. But, yeah, the kit program is how we run our elementary science for the most part.
When we talk about science, are we bringing in computer science, like at New York State? Like, oh, I know we do all sorts of things through stellar, but is New York State trying to bring in programming and that sort of computer science into our classrooms?
So, the state has talked about it. New Jersey, as a matter of fact, has brought in as a graduation requirement that students take a computer science course. New York does not have that at this time. They are talking more about that. We have our program. We've expanded. Again, we talked about that many times, from the middle school to the elementary and up to the high school now, and we look for those opportunities. We continue to do professional development. We have outstanding teachers. Mr. Gamash just got back from a computer science professional development. She's been able to incorporate these things into his classes that he teaches. So, it's, while not a requirement, it is something that we do do and are looking forward to expanding.
And you did mention it, but so there's no talk about any changes in terms of the Regents' track?
Nothing right now in terms of, yeah, I want to allay any of those fears that this is, again, I think we're learning from our mistakes, which is a good thing. We see what's happened with math and changes in Regents. There are changes in the global program. We'll see how that goes. Changes forthcoming in U.S. history. We'll talk about more about that in the future. But science is kind of slowly rolling this out, and there are no changes immediately.
And you'll put the presentation.
I'm going to get that video working before we're done, and everyone that stays, I'm going to be able to show.
Put it up on our website so everybody can see the videos.
Yes.
Anyone else?
I was just going to say, this is a good chance to maybe just reiterate how well our students did on the science assessment, right?
Oh, my gosh.
We have a low opt-out rate on science and high scoring, right?
We've had more kids opt out than we would like, especially last year, more opted out than the year prior, but certainly much lower than the 3-8 ELA exams, and our pass rate is in the 90, 95. It's outstanding. And that fourth-grade science assessment is a fun assessment. They're rolling ping-pong balls and golf balls, and they're measuring and experimenting with electricity and things. I mean, it's really neat. The kids enjoy it. There's a written aspect to it and a physical aspect to it, and the idea, again, is perhaps in 2022, they're going to move it to fifth grade, but they're not certain about that yet. But, yes, our teachers, our kids do a fantastic job with science throughout the grades.
Thank you, Dr. Pelletieri.
Thank you.
Dr. Johnson, update on security in our buildings?
We have told the board earlier this year, and we've also mentioned this to the public as well, that as the year progressed, we would keep you up to date on some of the changes and/or what implementation of our security plans in the buildings would look like. I think most parents in this room and most anybody who has had an opportunity to come to our buildings recently know that the anterooms that we had promised would be in place, that the security people that we had talked about hiring, and that the camera systems and the identification systems that we had talked about last year have, for the most part, all been put in. It's still a work in progress. We are still learning from our security people, from our principals, from our teachers, from our parents, exactly what would work best. There's always a wrinkle in the system when, in fact, there aren't a whole lot of models out there that we can just say, "Adopt this." So, we are learning with one another on how best we can continue to have our buildings be an inviting place for both parents, the community, and our children, and yet, at the same time, develop certainly within our student population the sense that they are always safe when they are inside of our buildings. Now, that being said, a couple of things recently have come up. One of them is the opportunity for our police officers in Rockville Center to have access to all of our buildings. So, we have been working with the police commissioner, and what we decided to do was to have swipe cards available to all the offices on patrol 24/7. There are five cars that are regularly on patrol. There is a sergeant's car that is, in fact, the sixth vehicle, and each of those have been outfitted now with a swipe card so that in the event that there is an emergency, any of the officers who come to our building will be able to gain access immediately to that facility. Questions continue to arise about covert schools since it is in the first precinct and not in the jurisdiction of the Rockville Center schools. You need to understand that our conversation with the Rockville Center Police Department as well as with the first precinct overlap, and that the camera system, which was recently installed in the Rockville Center Police Department, which is fully operational at this point, also includes covert school. You need to know in covert that actually, in the event that there is an emergency, that if it goes out as an APB, the Rockville Center police officers who are patrolling the north side of town are probably within a minute or two of accessing covert school and will immediately, as they say, "Roll" and go immediately to covert school. In all likelihood, they will be the first on site and will, in fact, take charge until an officer from the first precinct or from the Nassau County Police Department arrive and take over. So, they will be the first responders. You need also to know that because the camera system is on the desk of the Rockville Center Police and a Rockville Center police officer responds, there will be direct contact between the desk at the Rockville Center Police Department and, in fact, that officer who might arrive. What we're doing right now is working with the the Nassau County Police Department and putting a system in place that mirrors that that we have for Rockville Center. We're not there yet. Quite frankly, in the other school districts that are served by the Nassau County Police, it is their system. What you need to know about Rockville Center is that it is our system that sits on their desk. So that we maintain it. It is our software. It is our pictures. And yet they have learned how to use it and have direct access to any of the pictures that we have of all of our facilities in the school district. That doesn't currently exist on Nassau County. I will be meeting, as a matter of fact, I think either later this week or early next week, with representatives from Nassau County to talk about how we may, in fact, transport a similar system to the first precinct and see if we can't get something like that in place. It would not make any sense to have the pictures of all of the district at the desk in the first precinct, but it may make sense to have the video pictures for covert school available to them, and we can do that. So we're prepared to provide that system to Nassau County. I'm not sure logistically if they're prepared, in fact, to work that out and to have it become part of their integrated system of support for the offices in response to any emergency in the schools in Nassau County. But we're working on it. We want, I think we have a really good model in the way in which we work currently with our Rockville Center Police. We'd love to emulate that in our relationship and in the way in which we work on our response with the first precinct to the covert school. So again, that's a work in progress, and I will certainly keep both the Board of Education and the community up to speed on exactly where we are in our discussions with them as well.
Dr. Johnson, just to clarify, that the monitor that is in the Rockville Center Police Station is not running constantly, not being scanned by a police officer? It's just available in case of an emergency? Is that correct?
It's available to them at any time, but they are only instructed to use it in an emergency. They're not anxious to go in there and take a look. Interestingly enough, anytime that they access any of our videos, we have a record of it. So there is, the management and control of that entire system is on our end. So they understand that and the training that has taken place is really focused on their use of that technology only in the event that there's an emergency and they're called on to do so. What you need to know is that when, in Rockville Center, we make a call, a 911 call, it goes directly to that desk. So the response time is just about one or two or three seconds. So we really, literally, in our discussions with the police department and the people who come to us and work, we talk about seconds. In other words, I just mentioned you two minutes, but we look at 120 seconds and ask, how many of those seconds can we cut off and reduce in terms of getting a police officer into a building and to a site where there may be an emergency that they need to attend to? So we work on that every time we get together and we meet regularly with both the commissioner and representatives who are helpful to us and I hope we to them in having them become much more a part of our community. By the way, something else is going on as well that I suspect many of you are well aware of at this point. Both police officers from the first precinct and the Rockville Center Police are, in fact, now making themselves more a part of the life of our schools. They are coming in. They are visiting the schools. They are walking the schools with the principals. And we want them, to the extent that they can, regularly to come into the schools, familiarize themselves with the entire environment within. So in fact, when they respond, they just don't need a picture. They understand already what the inside of each of our buildings looks like and will be able to navigate that building without having any problems. And in the same time, we want them to get to know both our staff and our kids, and the kids to know them. So we are working with the commissioner on doing that. He's been wonderful and cooperative. You should also know, by the way, that we've had already an active shooter drill at the high school and more recently, we just had a second one in the middle school. And we're anticipating a third during this school year in one of our elementary buildings. So we continue to work with the police department to make sure that our children are safe and secure. And we both share the same common goal. We want people who live here, go to school here, who live here to feel that our community is, that everybody is a member of this community, and that at the end of the day, we need to take care of one another. So that's really our goal, and it's wonderful to work with the police department who share that same mission as we.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just one. Dr. Johnson, now that the police department has the computer up and running with our video and they have access cards, are we gonna run like a weekly report to double check, to maintain that it's being used as it should?
We hadn't talked about it, but we can. We talked about periodic checks by the, but you know, we can do it either on a weekly or monthly basis. It might be smart to do it that way.
I think we should set something, you know, definite, a definite timeline, how many times, you know, however, however many times we want to do it a year or a week or however, and we'll abide by that.
Fine, fine. Not a problem. It really is not a problem.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Items for discussion, the 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021 calendar.
All right. Well, we're actually looking at two calendars tonight. One is for the upcoming school year, for the 1920 school year. I'm not asking the board to adopt it tonight, but we're certainly hoping by the end of this month, we'll be able to have the Board of Education adopt the 1920 calendar. It really doesn't present a whole lot of problems. I think we have copies of it outside for everyone to take a look at. The 2021 calendar is a challenge, only because Labor Day comes so late in the year. It is, it gives us an opportunity to start school for our children before Labor Day, which I suspect is what's probably going to happen countywide. And so there's an A option and a B option for that. There's no need for anybody to adopt it. We won't adopt that until next year, but it certainly is worthwhile putting it out there for a discussion. However, that being said, I think we need to move over and take a look at the 1920 calendar and just ask if there are any questions or concerns that any of you may have with regard to how we have constructed that. You do need to know, by the way, that we are continuing to work with the state education department to move as late into June as we possibly can for what they call the Regents' Rating Day, which is the last day of school that is designated by the state. Understand that the Regents' exam period ends with what they call the Regents' Rating Day, which is one day following the last exam that's offered, and that generally is the last day of school. We are permitted to run school after that, but we can't get state aid on it. That technically is supposed to be the last day of school. We have been pushing them in recent years to move it to the very last week, the last full week of June. And you will see in the 1920 school year that the ending is, I believe, on the 20, the 26th of June.
And 25.
Right. Which gives us room during the school year to insert all of the testing days we need, all the snow days we need, and to comfortably fit 184 working student days.
This has gone through committee?
Yes.
And this is, you know, this is the outcome between what we've fed back to Mr. Bartels and the...
Yeah, Mr. Bartels may make a comment or two about the committee and how it operates and who sits on this committee. Just so you know, that it wasn't just something that we just kind of idly put together. There is an entire process for developing the calendar.
Yeah, we do have a calendar committee, which is comprised of members from each of our bargaining units in the district as well as a member of the PTA. And we go through the calendars to try to identify the days. Typically, it's pretty standard. Usually just a few dates that become questionable each year. Certain days we try to stay away from for having students come in, like Election Day, things like that, and then where we start each year. So as Dr. Johnson said, the 1920 calendar was fairly easy. I think everybody kind of agreed on those dates. It's a fairly simple calendar. And the committee drafted two calendars, two options for the 2021 calendar, only because of where Labor Day falls. And if we start school after Labor Day, it gets very tight as far as what days you can or cannot have off. If you start before Labor Day, there's a lot more leeway in how you set up the calendar.
Mr. Bartels, on the side of the calendar runs down numerous holidays, days off, our days off. How is that, is that, do we come to those days by contract with our staff? Do we come to those days by, is it, some are federal holidays?
Yeah, it's typically the federal holidays that we follow. Most of them, there are some that we tack on. So for example, in 1920, we're off on the 27th of November. That's the Wednesday. We only have to be off the 20th and 29th, but because we have the days available within the calendar, we take that Wednesday off. That's been a day that the staff has looked for year in, year out. A lot of days, a lot, many years we have to be in on that day because of the way the schedule works. But this particular year, we're able to be off. It works the same way for Election Day. Typically, we've been off with students, but we do open up for staff as a superintendent's conference day to get in those 184 days.
Robert, at what point in the process do you choose which days would be parent-teacher conference days? You know, for elementary, it ends up being half-days for students. At what stage of the calendar process does that happen?
We actually don't look at that in the calendar committee. Chris?
That comes out of my office after the calendar's created.
Okay.
We then look at numbers of days in each trimester and then map out from there when the half-days are.
Okay.
Are we concerned at all, sorry, are we concerned at all about the May 22nd date with IB testing or?
Say that again.
IB testing, the scheduled May 22nd date?
Yeah, what we will do is that we will probably put a disclaimer at the bottom of the page that will indicate that if, in fact, by the way, just so you know, we try to backload as many of our vacation days as possible so that in the event that there is inclement weather that we run into during the school year, those holidays can, in fact, be canceled. The 22nd happens to be one of them. But we are prepared to move that to the 26th of May in the event that there is IB testing during that week. And we'll probably put something to that effect on the calendar when, in fact, we adopt it. Thank you very much for bringing that up. That's, yeah, we're aware of that. We don't, we won't know for...
But when would, when would we know that?
I'd probably have to check with Mr. Murphy, but sometimes we don't know that until the opening of school.
Right.
IB is very late in putting together their calendar, and they oftentimes don't tell us exactly when they, but we need to have that flexibility.
So, but now for the calendar this year, I think we pre-did that. We said this year, we moved.
We moved it.
We didn't move it. We never had it on Friday. We just, we put it on Tuesday.
We just decided to have it on, right.
Why are we deciding?
Because we have two days. We have...
No.
Oh, I, it's...
Right.
Well, Monday's Monday. We have to have Monday.
Monday's Monday.
Right.
But in this conversation last year, we said Friday might be an IB.
If that's what the board would like to do, why not? We can do it.
I would think it would meet the needs of the community more. They can plan something if they wanted to. That could be eliminated as a snow day, but...
It always could, right.
Right. That's the first date we usually eliminate, but I still think it would be better to put it on the Tuesday.
If you wanted it to be safe, right from, right up front, we could put the 20 second and make the 26th.
Yeah. So it's still, you know, it has...
We could do that now.
Great possibilities of being a four-day weekend.
Yeah.
Unless we get a lot of snow.
What we try to do is to be consistent with everybody else. So that what we do is we create problems sometimes when we put, for example, on that Tuesday, the additional day off. Because many of the people who have children in our school district but work elsewhere may, in fact, have that Friday and Monday off, but will not have that Tuesday off. So...
Oh.
Yeah, but I mean, every year, we run that risk with Labor Day and all that. So it's something we're trying to plan out and give the community advance, but...
You know what? If you, you know, it probably would be, make sense if, at the time that we adopt it, because in the event that anybody's put together long-term plans for any kind of vacation or visit with relatives, telling them well in advance that it's going to be on the 26th instead of the 22nd.
I think it would be much more disturbing to, come October, find out that there's an IB exam. You have an elementary student, and now you're told you have to go to school. I think it's better to set it up now.
Fine.
And to wait, right?
I do, too.
Good idea. That's fine. Not a problem.
Also, I had a question about the half-days. Were we talking about the question of how many half-days we're going to have? Because I know this year in December, we had two half-days. So I didn't know, there was some talk from the state about counting that as a full day or the hour for the last day.
Yes. There is lots of discussion going on at the state level right now. They have changed the way in which we calculate attendance so that we now take a look at the number of minutes in a week and in a year rather than, in fact, how many days. They're making it more problematic for us to have half-days during the school year. They've gotten in the weeds on what is a testing day and what is not. And what they're doing is they're pushing school districts to increase the number of days of attendance and to cut out half-days. The pressure is on us now to eliminate half-days.
So will that affect us for this calendar for next year?
It should not. I believe we have enough minutes in a week and a day. Remember, we run seven hours and 10 minutes each day. Our school day for kids gives us enough time, both in the day and in the week, to meet all of the state requirements. And we have enough days in the year to, in fact, meet that requirement as well. So we, right now, we don't have a problem.
So the half-days in this, next year's calendar will look similar to the half-days from this current year we're in now?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
And that, but that may change the following year.
It may, but just understand, we are in the process of negotiations with our Teachers' Association, and so that may change. It's on the table for discussion.
Okay.
So in other words...
But as far as the state telling us that we can or can't...
Understand, that's all part of a contract.
Right.
So there's always a possibility that that may change as a result. It may not. But because the contract is up for discussion and negotiation, and this is a priority of the state, there is a possibility that we may need to push that into and to have that discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that, then we still could look at effect for next year?
Pardon me?
We may be affected next year.
Yeah, but that doesn't come until much later. I don't know. Chris, when do you do that? In June? When do we, the, there is a whole series of actions that take place with regard to setting up the days when, in fact, we have report cards.
Oh, yeah, for parent-teacher. Yes, that gets done.
Parent-teacher days.
Once the calendar is settled, we then, that's when it happens because we have to have those calendars settled so we can go back and count the number of days to make sure that we have a close to equal number in each trimester. And then we look at the calendar and try to make sure when I'm up against a holiday, things like that. That actually happened this year. We were up against December 20th.
Right. And I feel that there are a lot of parent-teacher conference days. It might be something we want to talk about. Is that in their contract? That's where that gets discussed? That's what I'm asking. Who makes that final decision?
The fact that we have two each time.
Yes.
Because there were definitely, it felt like a lot of conferences, parent-teacher conferences.
I'm bringing it up because it does create a hardship for parents to make sure somebody's, somebody will be available for their children if they are working parents. So the sooner the better.
Okay. But that has nothing to do with what we're adopting here.
No, 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 no.
I understand that.
It was just a side conversation.
Well, I'd probably need to understand it as well.
It was a side comment.
I don't think we've ever talked about that. Okay, anybody, any other questions? No, we're good. Thank you. Dr. Johnson, update on changes to 11th grade and high school special education programs?
Sure. This is another item that I have indicated to both the board and the community. I will probably keep on a number of our agendas as we proceed through the second half of this school year. The Board of Education, I think, as most people in this community know, recently adopted some recommendations that we had made with regard to the introduction of a new special education program at South Side High School, as well as changes to the 11th grade English and Social Studies curriculum and instructional program. So in pursuit of that, what we're, we have done is set up a series of meetings with... So in pursuit of that, what we're, we have done is set up a series of meetings with, I said we were going to get started right away, and we have. Members of my central staff, as well as the high school staff, are meeting now every two weeks to in fact review the parameters of what it is that we are working on. Just to give you an idea of, of the complexity of the problem, you know, sometimes when you put together a recommendation for something like a special class, it looks simple to begin with until you get into the particulars and understand that there are nine periods in a day, teachers work five periods, can be assigned for five periods, and that, you know, there are five subject areas to, into which, the main subject areas, they all have to be regions-level instructional program, and that we have to accommodate kids for nine periods during the day. So that, it is just not a class, it is an entire program that we have to take a look at, and we are doing just that. So we will, we will, as, as we get, move forward, have more information for both the board and for the community on exactly what that will look like. We're close to defining what those parameters look like at this point, and I think we feel very comfortable in the way in which we are moving at this, at this stage, where we combine both the opportunities for these kids to experience instruction by people who are properly certified in a subject and in special education at the same time, while meeting the state requirement of making sure that everybody is exposed to a region's curriculum where a region's is required. The second part of that really has to do with the 11th grade English and Social Studies. What we're doing is there, two things are happening right now. We are in the process of taking a look at what the curriculum parameters should be. We are trying as best we can to find out what exactly the changes will be that IB will be introducing for the upcoming school year and make sure that they are incorporated into the curriculum project. We will probably have a team in place in the next two weeks to work on the curriculum for that class, and then we are also working on putting together a staff development plan so that everybody is then brought up to speed on exactly where we need to be so that come September, everyone will be on the same page. So it's early, we've had two meetings so far, and we will be meeting every two weeks, and I will continue to keep both the board and the community up to speed. Just understand where there are budget implications, as there are by the way, for the special education program. That will be incorporated into our discussion later on when we get to staffing. That'll be one of the last meetings that we have, but there will be staffing implications for the discussion on, for our budget, one of our budget discussions on the special education program. All right?
Thank you. I know that we did, on our, in our December meeting, we did let the public know it would be a, it's not a quick process. It, it has to be thought out very well, very consciously about what, how we're moving forward, and we're going to, you know, we're definitely going to take it that way.
Whatever we put together needs to be a program, not just a simple class. We have to take a look at all of the eligible students and make sure that we're accommodating the needs of all of them, and that the parameters that we ultimately agree to will in fact give us enough flexibility to accommodate a variety of students in that program. So that's where we're at right now, and it's, it's, it sounds easy on, up front until you get down in the weeds and it gets to be somewhat complicated.
Any questions from anybody on the board? All right. Thank you. Opportunity for Superintendent?
I just wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year. It is just been a good school year so far. We hope to see all of the good things that we've started so far this year continue. And I would like to invite the public to join us and participate where appropriate in the budget discussions. Just so you know, we, we have a problem in this building for the upcoming meeting on January the 23rd because we have exams that week. In all likelihood, we are going to move that meeting to the middle school so that our budget discussion on that evening will be at the middle school. At the same time, different place. We have to keep this building absolutely secure during the regions. It's one of the agreements that we have with the state, and so to do that, we are, we have made the decision to move the meeting to, to the middle school. But again, what we'd like to do is to have as many people as possible join us, listen to what the board and we have to discuss. There will be meetings at which the principals and directors will in fact be invited to participate and discuss their respective budgets, and there will be ample opportunity at each of the meetings for the public to engage the board in a discussion about what they hear that evening. So we would invite you and like for you to come and participate. This Board of Education always puts a lot of pressure on, make sure that the process is an open one so that everybody in the community has an opportunity to know what's going on and in fact participate. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mrs. McNulty?
Hi, everyone. My voice is going, so I want to say Happy New Year to everyone and welcome back to, can't believe we're in January of 2019 already. Thank you to the Covert students that were here tonight. It's so great to watch the students come and see what they learn in the classrooms. It really brings it to life to all of us, so that's really exciting. You see the grandparents here and the parents here and giving their kids hugs, and it's just so awesome because that shows that's what we're all about. So, so nice to see them, so it was great to see Covert, and we thank them, and Senor Rodriguez for his hard work. Also, congratulations to all the athletes. It's really amazing to hear about that because you don't always hear that, and it's really special, so it's nice for them to get honored. I think it's great that we do that here at the board meetings. It's special for them. You really get to see, the room fills up and the parents are so excited, so I think that's great. And thank you to Dr. Pelletieri for teaching us about the new science and where we're heading with that.
He has the video and work.
I knew, I saw that happening. You went to Google, I saw that trick over there.
We'll do it.
Okay. And also, we're coming up upon our budget season, and we welcome everyone to come and listen. There will be lots of information provided and lots of things to talk about and discuss. It sounds like it'll be an active budget season, so we welcome everyone to partake in that. Thank you.
Happy New Year, everybody. Also, thank you, Senor Rodriguez and the Covert students. It was so great to see them here tonight, and the student athletes and the coaches, Coach Webster in particular, getting recognized by the county as well. That was really nice to see. Keep up the great work to everybody. And Dr. Pelletieri, I will steal that and ask the kids the question. I like that. Did you ask a good question today? So thank you.
Mrs. Deeh?
Okay, so yes, it was really fabulous. The kids are fabulous. No, and it is really cool when you get to see the elementary on the same day that the high school students come. It's kind of neat to see that. And beyond that, it feels like it's been a long time, so I wanted to thank Dr. Leahy and Dr. Johnson and the Police Department and Northwell Health and, I forget who, the Village. I was at the middle school for the Stop the Bleed slash shooter, active shooter drill, and it is sort of heart-stopping and, and overwhelming, but we had, the, the music room was filled up with, with our teachers and our professionals who were doing the Stop the Bleed. It was really impressive. Everybody is working together, as Dr. Johnson was saying, it was really, it was something. It was very special, so, and very scary, but thank you for putting all that together. And not that I look forward to doing it again at the elementary school, but I do. I mean, I think it's really very good. And then lastly, I, I was able to get to a couple of concerts this year, and at one of the high school concerts, the last number, the, the teacher handed his baton to a student and had the student conduct the final number of the night. And, I mean, it almost brought a tear to my eye. It just, it was so touching. It takes so much for a student to get up in front of his peers and do that, and the entire audience, and so much trust for a teacher to hand his baton to a student, and I just applauded both of them and the entire music department because it takes everybody from those elementary all the way up to, to bring that child to that place. So congratulations to them, and that's all. Happy New Year.
It's always so hard going last because there's so little left to talk about. I just wanted to say, I really enjoyed the, the Covert students, and we could really use some subtitles for those of us who took Italian because I was lost, but they were amazing, and I love, that's what we want. We want our kids to know more than we know, and they prove that with robotics when they come here too, because that is completely something that amazes me, what our kids know how to do and what they learn. I actually understood Carol speaking about football more as a mother of boys than I did the fless, but I, I think it's great, and I loved seeing the little kids get up there and have the confidence in front of everybody to speak. That's really hard to do. Just facility-wise too, it's something that we don't talk about often, but I was over at Covert's gym, and it's beautiful. The floor looks amazing, it was freshly painted, and, you know, we, we go there maybe every week for a basketball game or something. We kind of sometimes don't stop and take a look around and really notice what our buildings, how they're upgraded and how they look, but if you're over at Covert, it really does look beautiful. I'm happy for the parents there that it worked out and they're back in business. The tennis courts at Hewitt as well, for anybody who hasn't seen those, they look phenomenal. I know a lot of people want to know why Hewitt needs tennis courts, but just a reminder, they're for the district, and our high school teams, I know, will use them in the spring, and it's just, this is, you know, part of what we do, and that's how we take care of our facilities. So we have amazing maintenance staffs, custodial staffs, and the more you look around, the more you can appreciate what, what it is that they do. Pray for no snow removal this year, or a snow day wouldn't be bad, Robert. I love listening to your voice on my, my voicemail. Yeah, we love hearing that. At least one.
Put background.
So that's it. Happy New Year.
All right. It's, it's a privilege to, and an honor to be here with our students from what we, how we go from our elementary school all the way up through high school academically, enrichment-wise, to the athletic department. It, you know, it all, I have said this so many times over the years, it, it's what makes Rockville Center a great school district. We give opportunity to students all, in all different ways they can achieve here, and the achievement, say, an achievement in athletics will also make them achieve more in their studies. They're kind of forced to do well in school if they want to be on the team, which is good. It just gives our students the opportunity to shine where they can shine best. So that, that is always such a thrill to see where, you know, the differences and where we go with our students. I want to just remind everybody, on the 23rd, we will be meeting in the middle school. That is our first budget. We're starting budget a little early this year. It's just going to be an overview, so it won't be so long. So it'll give you a feeling of where, you know, what we're looking towards for next year. And that is it. Happy New Year, everybody. Thank you so much for coming to us, and we'll move on to the business of the meeting. All right. Do you have a motion to accept the mint? Oh, I'm so sorry. Opportunity for visitors. If you can come to the mic, give us your name and address, please. Wow. That one's fine. Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Was this the one that wasn't working?
No.
No, it should be working, yeah.
Okay. Hi, my name is Marcia Hennig. I reside at 86 Davidson Place, and I am in the Riverside School District. I have a statement prepared. I also typed it out and printed it out for each of the board members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dear Rockville Center School District Board of Education, Dr. Johnson.
Sure.
I am here as a representative of the parents of the students of the, in the Riverside District. We are demanding that the Board of Education adds a busing option for all middle schoolers, grade six through eighth, who reside south of Sunrise Highway. The current Board of Education bylaw that defines a minimum of .8 mile distance requirement for rider eligibility does not take into account the perils facing our children who are forced to cross the hazardous street of Sunrise Highway. I and we recognize that the Rockville Center Board of Education has rejected this request in the past. However, we should not wait until, until another one of our children is struck down by a vehicle before taking appropriate responsible actions. I have outlined below the changes that our village has undergone since the last time the Board of Ed has considered this request. The pedestrian accidents in Rockville Center, New York. According to the site, data新York.gov, 1,170 motor vehicle accidents took place in Rockville Center during the years 2014 to 2016. These are the most recent years that a full set of data was available. 68 of those reported accidents involved pedestrians, 20 of whom were crossing with the light. In April of 2017, a man was struck and suffered serious head injuries on the corner of Park Avenue and Sunrise Highway. On October 20th, 2017, a woman was hit while crossing at the corner of Lincoln Avenue and South Park Avenue. One week later, a woman was struck and killed by a FedEx box truck at that same intersection. In February of 2018, a bicyclist was struck at the intersection of Long Beach Road and Sunrise Highway. In May of 2018, a woman was struck and killed by a box truck at the intersection of South Park and South Center. Last month, two of our middle school, Southside Middle School boys were victims of a hit-and-run while crossing South Park Avenue and Rockaway. And just within the past 48 hours, Monday, the crossing guard at the corner of South Park and Windsor Avenue had her car sideswiped. Yesterday, the crossing guard at the corner of Hendrickson and South Park had her car hit. If these accidents are taking place at guarded intersections, just imagine what's happening in others. What has caused all these, you know, this run-on accidents? So some of the changes that have been happening in Rockville Center over the past 10 years since the board last reviewed this. There's increased congestion. According to the site, www.bigestuscity.com, the population has increased in Rockville Center by over 800 people between 2010 and 2017. That site states that Rockville Center, New York, is as large as it has ever been. But not only has the Village of Rockville Center grown with more people and small businesses, but our restaurants have continued to flourish, drawing visitors to our most busy streets, Sunrise Highway and Merrick Road. New development in the surrounding communities of Oceanside and East Rockaway have added to this traffic. And let's talk about GPS technology. So today's drivers are using applications such as Waze and other live-feed GPS apps. These apps find previously unknown side roads to circumvent traffic and red light cameras. With Long Beach Road now home to five red light cameras, the apps are sending drivers seeking the shopping centers that, that are to our south across roads such as Lawson Boulevard, South Park Avenue, Morris Avenue, South Forest, at greater speeds than can be considered safe for our children to walk across the dangerous intersections at Lincoln, Merrick, and Sunrise. The increased speed and distracted driving are beautiful newly paved roads such as Park Avenue and Rockaway Avenue have lent themselves to speedway conditions. Most dangerously, distracted driving from cellphone activities has contributed significantly to the increased risk of an accident, if not, God forbid, of fatality. There are benefits to this change to the Rockville Center School District. There would be less congestion at the Southside Middle School. With the parents who reside south of Sunrise Highway becoming ever more fearful of their children crossing these dangerous streets, the congestion at the middle school during drop-off and pickup times has become absolutely preposterous and downright treacherous as more and more students are being driven to and from the school. If you stood at the corner of Hillside Avenue and Burtis Avenue during drop-off and pickup hours, you could see the number of children that are darting in and out of the congested traffic, putting their lives at risk. There is a serious safety concern at stake here. The ability for first responders to reach this area during peak hours is severely impeded, putting not only our children, our faculty and our staff at risk, but all of those surroundings' residents, many of whom have lived on those streets for decades. By offering a busing option to an additional 60 children, we can relieve some of this congestion. There's a better utilization of resources. The current allocated resources are not being utilized at capacity. The one bus that is assigned to south of Sunrise sixth graders who live farther than the .8 mile distance rule is woefully empty. Sixth graders who can opt to take the bus, but if they have an old, older sibling in the seventh or eighth grade who is being car-driven- or eighth grade who is being car-driven, they may not be taking advantage of the bus. On average, a typical Riverside District class is 31 students. Therefore, on average, we're talking a total of 93 students that would be offered this option. At a standard capacity of 60 passengers per bus, only one additional bus is needed if all of the students opted in. And there is precedence. There's, in 2017, the Seaford School District heeded the concerns of parents and students and proposed Proposition Two that would provide transportation for more middle and high school students. It passed 1,114 to 467 on the May 2017 ballot, garnering robust community support for the safety of their children. And I am certain that Rockville Center community would react the same way. Since the topic was raised at just the Monday night Riverside PTA meeting, I have heard nothing but support for this request from the concerned parents, many who plan to send their own letters to the Board of Education. And there is preparation for petitions. They've already begun. So, in summary, we should not have to wait for another accident involving one of our precious middle school children to take action. These potential scenarios are foreseeable as they are predictable. The Rockville Center Board of Education can be the hero to our Riverside District families by recognizing the changes that our tight-knit village has undergone over the last decade and going above and beyond the sorely lacking .8 mile distance rule. The budget season is upon us, so now is the time to act. The cost of adding one additional bus is not greater than the value of a 12-year-old's life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mind if we?
Yes, please.
Have a little conversation? The tragedies that you talk about here are, I think, indicative of life wherever we live on Long Island, not just here in Rockville Center.
I agree.
Go down to Oceanside on Long Beach Road, it's very dangerous there as well. Lawson Boulevard is very dangerous. In East Rockaway and Lindbrook, Lannock Avenue was... So, I think it certainly is a problem wherever we go. To get to the issue that you're discussing here, are you thinking that we could ask for and that the community would approve a bus for Riverside only?
No. So, in my, you know, again, this just came up on Monday, but in my foresight, what I, I guess what I'm asking is to take that rule that says, right now, the eligible, to become eligible rider, you have to live .8 miles. And instead, look at that and take into account some of the main thoroughways that are going through there and see, and do your own statics, you know, status quo and research. And take a look at that and see, does that really make sense in light of, to do just a hard number of .8, does that really make sense in light of having a road such as Sunrise Highway that is cutting right in the middle of our districts? So, in precedent, so in the Seaford example, and I believe that the state law allows this, that the .8, or I believe the state law is a...
For us, right, well, just, in 1982 or '83, there was a special law that was passed when Dean Skellos was a senator at the time. And it was in response to a commissioner's order for desegregation within this community. And at the time, we had a sixth-grade center. And the resulting law that went on the books into perpetuity said for kindergarten through sixth grade, children, the distance that would be used to measure eligibility for transportation would be .8. For seventh and eighth grade, it would then revert to 1.3 miles.
Right.
And that's what it is right now.
Right.
For all children. So, I'm not sure what Seaford did...
What Seaford did was that they took the hard stance, the .8 or their law, and what they said was, we have to now take into account some of these outside factors that are impacting the safety of our children. So, at the time when the law was established and adopted into the bylaws of the Board of Education, it may have been for other reasons. I understand that. I think the parents of the entire district understand that. What we are saying, that today's world is very different. And in today's world, with the distracted driving, with the driving under the influence, with the congestion in Rockville Center, with Sunrise Highway being named one of the most dangerous thoroughfares on Long Island with reported accidents, and this is a Newsday article and I didn't have the source...
No, I, listen, I...
...that we're asking that those factors be taken into account now.
All right, I'm going to have to do a little homework because I have to find out. When you say we approached this and turned it down a long time ago, you're right, we did. And I was here when that happened. And the reason was that we, on the surface of it, when we took a look at moving one point, the 1.3 to .8 for seventh and eighth grade, we couldn't find justification for doing it for a single school. And if in fact, we could limit it to a single vehicle that serves one section of the community, using it as our rationale, the fact that it only applies to children when they have to cross Merrick and Sunrise Highway as pedestrians, were they to then have to get to school? I'm not sure that we can do that.
Right. But that is what the, yes, that is the gist of...
That, the way in which I read what you're asking, then I can certainly explore that and certainly get back to both you and the Board of Education on what the results of that exploration would be. I'm not sure under what circumstances the state would allow that. And I'll check out with Seaford, in fact, what their proposition looked like. Knowing what little I do about Seaford, they have certainly Merrick Road, I'm not sure that Sunrise traverses all of their, in their community and how far north they go. But certainly Merrick Road runs right through the middle of, and you know, the centerpiece of their town is our long Merrick Road. And I'm not sure if they have schools below and above. I mean, I'll find out. And I can also find out from the state whether or not we are permitted to isolate a single community that may be situated below one of these roads and forced because of a set of circumstances we can't control to have their children walk across these dangerous thoroughfares. There are some provisions that allow for exceptions, and I'm not sure that they would apply here, but I will find out for you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right?
I appreciate it.
So, I would, give me a call and make sure, if there's a possibility, I may have an answer for both you and the Board by the 23rd of January.
Okay.
But just understand, and you were very correct in assuming that it has to be a proposition. This is not something that the Board of Education can change. They can only suggest to the community that it be changed, but it is the community that has to make that change. And our experience in the past, just you know, was that when we considered it, and I don't remember all the circumstances, we did in fact, look to see if Riverside would be eligible alone and found out that we couldn't. We had to then extend it to all children within the school district. And when we did that, the cost then became the issue. And we were looking at a million dollars' worth of additional expense. Right now, I think it's what, a bus is about $60,000 or $70,000? Yeah, I don't think it would be a million dollars, but I would be, in other words, if I take all the sixth, all the seventh and eighth graders throughout the entire district and then figure out anybody who lives between .8 and 1.3, how many additional buses? My guess is we're looking at four or five buses.
Right, which is why, yeah, we're looking at Sunrise Highway.
I understand the way in which you wrote this.
Right.
And I would certainly hope that the rest of this community would appreciate and understand the jeopardy that the children are in who live south of Sunrise and have to cross those two. That was not our experience in the past. But nevertheless, let me explore it and I will certainly report back to you and to the Board of Education and let you know.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Sure. Very well done. Thank you very much.
Gina Marie Bounst, 24 Ardsley Place. I just had a quick question about the 11th grade changes, Special Ed program. Dr. Johnson, you mentioned you were looking into instruction of properly certified in subject matter teachers plus Special Ed. I just wanted to ask if you can go into that a little more detail. Are we talking about dual-certified teachers for the entire program or what, which program? What does that look like? If you don't mind.
Yeah, Norina's been a part of that discussion, so feel free.
So, Ms. Bounst, are you asking about the program, the Core Two program, or the 11th grade co-enrolled?
I'm not sure. I didn't catch that part. I just heard the instruction of properly certified in subject matter plus Special Ed.
No, that's the, the, the Core Two program.
Yeah, that's, Dr. Johnson was referring to the Core Two program.
Okay.
Will be taught by a duly-certified special education and content specialist.
So, that's, that's the goal, that you're moving in that direction?
That's what we're going to do.
Okay, that's excellent. Very excited about that. Thank you. And then just a quick comment. Dr. Johnson, you mentioned that it sounds easy on paper, but it's very difficult. I want you to know, and I'm very careful when I speak on behalf of our SEP community, but I will confidently say that now, we never thought this was an easy task. And we really very much appreciate all the work that has gone into by all the teachers and administration. So, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Karen Burge, 15 Hendrickson Avenue. Sorry, had the voice been going on too. I probably should have just mentioned to Gina to say this, but the program and the difficulties that you're running into, I'm just curious, it's all running on schedule though, and it's still planned to be, both the Core Two and the IB is still on schedule to be effective.
I specifically stayed away from the use of the word difficulty. We're not viewing them as difficulties. It's just complications.
Absolutely.
It's, you know, look, I, we want to make sure that this is a real equality experience for every single child who participates and that there's a good balance between opportunities for them to experience all of the core subjects as well as any of the other opportunities that would be available to them or to anybody else in the school. You know, there are so many different electives to which they would be able to, in which they would be able to participate. Make sure there's room in the school day for them to do that. And yet, make sure that they have all of the services that they are needed. So, that's why I say it's complicated, but I don't see it as a difficulty.
But we're still working towards...
But it's time-consuming. Pardon me?
We're still working towards a September...
Oh, no, no.
That was my question. Are we still on schedule?
No, we are on schedule.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So, is this something that is going to be discussed at CSE meetings this spring? And so, we'll have enough detail to give...
There is a process in place, as you know, that before any significant change to a child's program, there must be a CSE meeting. So, there will be meetings.
Right, there will be. I'm just concerned about parents coming into the CSE meetings and being, having enough time to process what they're putting, you know, the choices that the team is going to have for each child. We'll have enough details for the spring meetings for them to...
We, I understand completely. We spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks with each of the subgroups. Psychologists will be running the meeting, of course, Dr. Gudon, social workers, speech teachers, Special Ed teachers, explaining the program to them.
Right.
And telling them about how it will, how it will be approached. And certainly at every annual review where it's appropriate, the program will be recommended. At every annual review, the continuum of services is considered for every child. So, they would say they're currently inclusion, is that too restrictive, not restrictive enough? And so, you'll, you remember those discussions at every meeting. So, just like any other time. So, at this, during these annual reviews, Core Two will be an additional option.
No, I'm not concerned for myself. I'm here at these meetings. I understand what we're working towards. Parents who aren't aware, it might come as a shock hearing this, you know, at their CSE. So, I want to make sure they have enough time to process with the whole. It's a big change for a lot of kids. It's something that a parent might not expect. So, we are running on schedule and we will have enough to present parents at the spring meetings. Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
And Dr. Johnson, for the 11R, do you know how many students have opted into that? I know you've been talking about that and looking at that.
Yes, 27.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Karen, the other thing is too, the Your Schools issue that went out yesterday has a big write-up on the front page explaining what took place at the 12-5 meeting. So, for anybody that you're worried about, I understand that maybe it wasn't at the meeting or it just isn't totally in the know. We just put that information out district-wide so that it did explain what Core Two was being implemented and how it would be working. So, hopefully that just starts to get more information out there district-wide. So, you don't feel like you have to be the person to tell everybody.
Explain, right.
We have a copy in there next...
22nd.
Yeah, and we'll talk about it there too, but I think everybody...
It's, you know, the Your Schools will be a place for you to point to, to give you, you know, give them an overview.
And it was, it was mentioned on the Watts and PTA. Denise did a great job explaining it as well. So, it is definitely getting out there and spoken about, which is great.
Hi, Derek Polian-Gibney, 1327 North Long Beach Road. Can I just ask a question? I'm not sure if it's a budget issue for the budget that you'll start reviewing, but I know at Covert, many of the parents have a concern about the condition of the playground equipment. And we're just not sure if that's in our school budget or is that part of the grounds? Is that in another department's budget?
No.
Mr. Martens?
Yeah, it's the, it's regular budget. It'd be a regular budget item.
It's not out of Covert's budget, per se.
No, no.
It's a, it's a, it's a school district. Part of the district budget. It's a capital.
And is there a process where the condition of the equipment is reviewed year to year by the district?
Yeah, it is reviewed by our insurance company year to year. They evaluate all of our playgrounds.
Okay. Because I know we have equipment that were missing rungs on the monkey bars, were missing steps on the equipment. And given the fact that the gym was out of service, you know, for many months and we had our kids out there on the equipment more, we've been raising the concern on why these repairs haven't been made.
We should be able to get those done. I've not been aware of those at all.
Oh, okay. We were just wondering, like, where that falls. Thank you.
Yeah, the repair would be within the district maintenance budget.
Okay.
And typically, we'd come through a request from the principal.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
We'll ask Mr. John Scalisi to take a look, Robert?
Absolutely.
So, we'll take a look at it in the next day and we'll make a determination. Anyone else?
All right.
Do you have a motion to approve the minutes as listed in the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to receive, to approve the receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve the items for action? The PAR and its addendae as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session for discussion of specific negotiation matters?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for joining us tonight.